This is the meeting of Tuesday, December the first. In the meantime, I'm Vice Chairman Charles Ernst. Mr. Seifert will be joining us. He's caught up in traffic. We're going to go ahead and start the meeting and probably proceed without him through the first item of business. So, in the meantime, let's all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
My pledge allegiance to the flag, to the United States of America, to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Secretary, may we have a roll call, please?
Chair Kevin Seifert.
He is on his way.
Vice Chair Charles Ernst.
Present.
Commissioner Kenny Each.
Present.
Commissioner Jason James.
Here.
Commissioner Emmanuel Gentey.
Present.
Commissioner Peggy Boulay.
I have no information. Was she a...
Commissioner Bob Pishon.
Present.
Are there any amendments to the agenda? I noticed that we did get a new copy of the staff report.
Yes, as Commissioner Each may notice, there was a screening error on one of the items for the Waverford flat. And we have since revised that report to provide more accurate information.
Okay, that just involved page two, I believe?
Yes.
Only? The rest of the information?
Yes, everything else was.
We can note was correct except for the page two, which had some other project on it?
Yes.
Okay, very good.
Sorry about that.
That's quite all right. I want to go ahead and move for approval of the minutes of the meeting of November 3rd, 2015.
So moved.
Second. Second. Moved and seconded. All in favor of approval?
Aye.
Aye. Very good. Staff, do you have any communications for us, other than what we've just discussed?
I mean, just maybe the fountain at the corner of 132nd and West Dixie and Ninth Avenue. It has been recently designated as a historic structure by the Miami Dade County Historic Preservation Board. Because we took that item back in February to City Council, you know, trying to get support from the council to get that, you know, designated. And then this has been a very successful endeavor for us, you know. We are proud to say that it is now, and this fountain has been before the incorporation of the city, since 1924. So, it has always been part of the iron manners and a very integral feature of the city itself. So, we are proud that this has been designated and recognized by the county as a historic structure. And then from now on, any improvement that we made would have to be approved by the Historic Preservation Board of Miami Dade County.
Very good.
Yeah.
That probably foredates anything that was built in North Miami, I would think, including any developments.
I find it funny because on the first paragraph, West Dixie Highway, northeast 132nd Street, and northeast Ninth Avenue in the city of Miami.
Miami Beach.
They did correct it further down.
Yeah, yeah.
It is interesting.
Yeah, but, you know, that's just one of the first steps, you know, to continue with that effort, you know, to preserve, you know, the historic heritage of the city, you know.
Right. Well, we're very proud of that. Thank you very much, staff.
You're welcome.
Thank you. As a point of order, Mr. Chair, I would ask for any communications by you to any one of the applicants here tonight. If you've had any communications, any board member here, any commissioner, has had any communications with anyone?
Regarding any of the items?
Regarding any of the items.
No, sir.
Nope, no.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, gentlemen.
Okay, the first item up tonight is PC 1915. Mr. City Attorney, do you need to go ahead and administer the oath before I read this, or...
Yes, I would like permission to administer the oath. As this item, PC 1915, the request for a conditional use permit is quasi-judicial in nature. And anyone desiring to speak this evening on this matter, please stand and raise your right hand. Counsel is exempted. Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you provide is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Thank you. You may proceed, and gentlemen, you may be seated.
Thank you very much. PC 1915, a resolution of the mayor and the City Council of the City of North Miami, Florida approving an application for a conditional use permit and substantially the attached form transferring five, that's five floating residential units from the neighborhood redevelopment overlay NRO district, secondary residential pool of 989 floating residential units to a proposed 20-unit townhouse residential development to be named east of Fifth Town Homes on the two parcels located outside the NRO at 12121 Northeast Fifth Avenue and 509 Northeast 121st Street. And with the following folio numbers, 06-2230-031-0150 and folio number 062230-31-0160 in accordance with Article 4, Division 2, Section 4-204 and Article 4, Division 4, Section 4-405 of the City of North Miami Code of Ordinances, land development regulations providing for an effective date and for all other purposes. May we have staff report, please?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This is, the subject property involved in this application is basically comprises two lots, irregularly shaped lots, you know. They contain currently two old, you know, houses which were built, one in 1920 and the other one in 1940. The applicant, you know, have purchased those two properties and then now intend to develop that as a townhouse, you know, development. And this is an area that has seen, you know, that has not seen any development in the last past 50 years. And then those two houses right now, they basically, and I saw the community, have been on the subject of many, you know, code enforcement violations. And we welcome, you know, any improvement to that area. And then basically their intent is to build a town development. And then by right, they can put like, you know, 15 units on it. But they're trying to get, you know, five extra units, you know, to make it more of a more viable project, you know, from the secondary pool. But remember, you know, the NRO had like, you know, two pools, a primary pool for within the NRO, it was like, you know, for 4,000. 2,200 within the NRO and then 1,800 within on the CCD, within the central core district. And then, but since they are located outside the NRO, they are applying for the other 1,000, actually 989 because last year we did approve 11 units for a property or development on 123rd and not Fifth Avenue right here. So, they're just trying to get, you know, five units and then from the secondary residential pool. And then they have proposed, you know, are they trying to get those bonus density? They have proposed, if you look at the staff report, specifically at page eight of the report, they propose to have like, you know, certification from LEED or any other comparable program, doesn't have to be LEED, but they would include, you know, sustainable building standards into the development. They also would also provide, you know, transportation-oriented development standards that will give them another 10. So, they will get a total of 17.5, you know, dwelling units extra. But they're not applying for all those that they can get. But they're only applying for 10.97 dwelling units, which will translate in those five additional units to build, you know, that town of development. Upon reviewing, you know, this request in the light of the standards, you know, developed, set for in the code, specifically at section 3-405 of the city's LDRs, or Land Development Regulations, we have found the application or the request to be consistent with the comprehensive plan. It will not, even though they're applying for extra density, it will not change, you know, the intensity and density in that land use designation. It will be in compliance with the district regulation in terms of, you know, height and setbacks and all other, you know, development standards. It will also, and again, this is just a conceptual plan at this point. They are not required to submit any plans. And then, but they're just trying to get those extra units to be able to build that development. So, and then that will go after that approval by City Council, come back, you know, for a DRC review where we make sure that, you know, all concurrency, you know, requirements are met for the development. So, with this, the staff feel really comfortable, you know, to recommend approval of this application and based on the condition even listed in the staff report. Thank you.
Very good. And to reference that, this is a first step in a process which we no doubt will
Yes.
see this item again once the conditional use permit is issued, or...
No, no, that's the only type you would say, because, you know, because only the conditional use permit requires your approval and that of the City Council. But any of the DRC, which is administrative staff and review, once is approved, they would have to come to staff, you know, just to make sure that, you know, their development meets the development standards.
And all the conditions.
Exactly.
All the conditions.
And any condition that you may impose here will also be, you know, accounted for at that time.
Right. All right. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
At this time, we're going to go ahead and open up the public hearing. Hearing is now open. Good evening, Mr. Wallen. State your name and address for us, sir. Good to see you again.
Good evening, sir. Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, staff. My name is Frank Wallen. I'm an attorney with offices at 12865 West Dixie Highway. I'm here this evening representing Fifth Avenue Development LLC. And the principals are here. This is Pascal Korczmar and Marcelo Borodowski. And these fine gentlemen are not only the developers here, but they are architects. And they are the gentlemen who are responsible for designing and building this project with your blessing, we hope. And it is one of a number of projects that they have designed and developed and built. I have a picture of one which I is, I know I had, I thought I had some more, and I'm going to pass it up and pass it around if I may.
Let the record reflect that the applicant has submitted a photograph purporting to depict what the building was.
Yeah, this is a, this is a project that my clients built about eight or 10 years ago in the city of Miami Beach. And I think you can see from the design of that project and from the conceptual rendering.
Can we come over to the mic, Frank, please?
Sure. The rendering which we have here, which basically says that this is a very, very nice project. And if you look in the area, if you look to the east, is the Clarendon South Building. This is a project that is typical of a lot of construction in our city, where you have parking underneath and apartments of 700 or 800 square feet. This is not that. These are single-family townhomes. They're large, they're spacious. The lot, I know you've got a copy of the plans in your package, the lot has a lot of green space. It's very well-designed. It's very consistent, we think, with the Biscayne Park Transition Zone that it's intended to be sensitive to. Again, this is, it's a little bit less than an acre. They're permitted by right, I think, 16 units. This is going to allow them to make an economic use of the property and basically give it what we believe is its highest and best use. One of the things that I'd like to correct, which was just called to my attention, is that this will not be receiving a gold seal from the US GBC, which is US Green Building Code. But it will incorporate, if you look at page nine of your packets, it will incorporate all of the items which we have discussed with staff and which we have agreed to provide, which is the Energy Star Equipment and Appliances, the lighting, the water reuse for irrigation, the landscaping and plant materials, the design for natural water flows and Heat Island, you know, effects. Everything that's on the staff report on page nine, these are all things that we are going to do. And we are going to comply with the requirements of the city's Development Review Committee, the City Council, and, you know, any other committee, board, or staff that we appear before. So, we would be happy to answer any questions. Again, we think this is a very, a very upscale project. And hopefully, if we are able to build this project, we will be looking to build more projects like this. And other people will be looking to build more projects like this in this part of the community, which is, I think, right now, you could say it's stagnant. And it hasn't seen construction in many years. And we'd like that to change, bring a lot of people back to the downtown area. Thank you.
Staff, do we have any questions for the petitioner?
Yes.
We'll start with Jason.
On page eight, you just mentioned that you're not going for LEED. But when I read item number four, and it says that the development shall provide proof of the certified designation under the LEED New Construction Rating System, I don't understand how you're saying you're not going for LEED, but then you're going to provide proof of certification.
What we're doing is, when we filed our application, and as it's gone through, and as I say, as it's incorporated in the staff report, we are doing most of the things that are required for green certification. However, the actual process of getting the gold seal for green certification is a process we are not following. It requires a lot of inspections, a lot of other changes, which we believe we can build in a timely fashion, a good project. I can, I feel comfortable calling it a project which is very green. However, it's not going to be certified as meeting all of the standards, all the gold seal standards required for green certification. But all of the things that we're going to do, all of the things listed on page nine of the staff report, which is basically what we've agreed to do and what I think everyone has relied on, we are bound to that, and we agree to do that.
Correct, but that's very different from saying that you'll provide proof of a certified designation under the LEED entity. I think, I think, I understand what you're saying, and I think it's fine. But I think that maybe that should be worded. I don't know if anyone else agrees with me. But I think you guys are following LEED initiatives. But how can you provide proof of a certified designation if you're not even going to get certification?
You know, a certification is, I'll stand to staff.
No, I was going to mention, you know, because, I mean, if you continue on paragraph four, and then it says that in the event that designation is not achieved, the proposed development. Because, yes, I mean, we have seen a lot of development come in, and, you know, when you tell them LEED certified, and people tend to shy away from that. And we don't want that to be, you know, or hindrance, you know, to bring in, you know, quality development. That's why we also, as we're going to update our land development regulations, we would include that, you know, any other comparable program. And then, you know, even those standards that we have, those minimum standards, basically they reflect, you know, those standards by, you know, the US GBC, you know,
Correct.
and then the LEED. But when I take, you know, sometimes when you tend to put, say, that to a developer, they tend to back off, you know, from the...
I agree, but I just think that's misleading. I think if staff can come up with like, I mean, it's a slightly different change in the wording. I know, because if anything, it's, to me, this is kind of dangerous for the applicant, not really for us as a city. I just don't see how we can say that they're going to provide proof of certification. I mean, that's...
No, no, we're...
That can be changed.
Mr. Commissioner, what we're saying is, we are not going to provide the certification, even though we are meeting many of the standards and all of the things that are included in the staff report and everything else the Development Review Committee desires us to do and that we agree upon, we're going to do, or we're not going to make it through that process. So, this is environmentally a very sensitive and friendly project.
Maybe we can change the wording slightly.
We can change it just a little.
It's a matter of semantics, first of all. If we're stating as one of the conditions,
Correct.
the city is stating that the conditions be that they get LEED certification. So, on the other hand, the developer is coming to say, well, we're getting close to getting LEED certification, but it's not. So, either the staff cannot have that as, to me, cannot have that as a condition, or altogether, or
Or just revise it.
or the developer provide it.
Absolutely. The fact that all of us here are obtaining different interpretations of the same language tells me that it's somewhat ambiguous, if not confusing, as you rightly pointed. This could be amended. The code itself, obviously, there's a preference towards the certification, but the code itself doesn't make that 100% a requirement because it also allows for all these other things to come into play in lieu of the certification. So, yes, it could be clearly, more clearly stated, and we will amend the report accordingly.
Okay. Well, I, based on Commissioner James's statement and his viewpoint on this, that should be amended here, I think, before we pass it on to the City Council.
We agree with that.
If we can get, if we can get some language...
We're actually amending the staff report.
We're not trying to decertify you, we're just trying to take, you know, we're trying to take out...
We appreciate that.
Because it's misleading.
And I, right, and I bring it up because in the resolution, you know, it says, you know, certification. And we would like to take that language out, although we are happy to agree to provide all of the, you know, all of the things that are listed, again, all of the, all of the building principles that we've listed and which staff has requested us to do, we are doing. But the certification and the certification process, which is time-consuming and adds a whole level of expense and delay to the project, is something we do not want to do. And so, we would like to at least take that specific language out.
So, if we, my question to staff again, should we amend the language? It still does not change the rest of the conditions that are stated on page nine of the staff report.
I mean, you just do that first sentence, we can just, you know, take that out.
If, however, if you do take that out, and you're no longer seeking LEED certification, then number two for density bonuses, doesn't that change the calculation? This first one where it says they're getting 7.5 dwelling units per acre for LEED certification?
I mean, even though, I mean, because we always, even the code specifically stays, you know, LEED, but we've always allowed our developers to use all the comparable program. Because, you know, some developer may not like LEED, they want to go to USBG and stuff like that. So, and I take, you know, as long as they provide, you know, the same, you know, standards, whether they LEED or the comparable program, I think we allow them. Because, you know, the intent is not that we have a specific certification. It's basically to reduce our carbon footprint.
And I agree with you. I just, I just feel like, and I hate to cut you off, but I just feel like when we go around giving people these density bonuses and for, and saying that it's LEED designation and in parentheses it says certified, that's much, much different than somebody taking, doing LEED initiative, like, you know, doing LEED principles. That's much different. Because it makes it look like they're doing a green building, and they're not.
No, but, you know, I mean, that's the way the code is, and that's one of the deficiencies that we have to address when we update our land development regulations. Because as it is written right now, it uses the word LEED. So, and then, you know, and then we, over the years, we have seen that developers, you know, have had, some developers have a preference for other programs than LEED. And then, you know, if we want to be pro group, pro development, we basically have not caved into their wishes, but at least, you know, work with them. And as long as the, I mean, the intent is to really, to make the city more sustainable, you know, reduce our footprint and then all this thing. And then by incorporating all those elements, because, and I think, you know, we would achieve, you know, closer to the same result as just a certification. It's not, they have to provide, you know, gold or silver, this is a platinum, this is just, you know, certified.
Yeah, the basic, the basic.
The basic, yeah.
But again, on following up, if I may, Jason. It leads to an inequity of someone who is following all the standards of LEED and going through all of that, goes through the paperwork, and he gets a certification. And then somebody else that doesn't go through all that stuff gets the same certification, gets the same amount of points.
Of density.
There's where the problem lies. In other words, you're calculating, you're giving him those, or whatever developer may come in with the same scenario.
Mm-hmm.
You're giving him points for, you're giving him a break on points, but yet somebody else who follows all the standards is getting the same, you know, has done the extra work to get the points. So, there's an inequity there, I think.
I see the equity issue, but in this case, I don't think it applies. Because the TOD standards alone gave him 10 dwelling units.
Okay.
I mean, because if we were to reduce, you know, the amount of credits just for that because they're not going for certified, they still meet, you know, I mean, it's a more, it's really more...
But...
But I agree with you.
For future applications.
For future applications. But I think, you know, by then, we will have, you know, addressed that in our LDRs to make it more, I mean, more flexible. Because right now, it just say LEED. And then we have been issuing, and most developers, they don't want to go to the LEED route.
When these LDRs were first promulgated, LEED was the king.
Exactly.
LEED was king. There are other agencies that do certifications equally as good as LEED. And so, therefore, we should accommodate also all these other agencies. And that is something that we're going to do when we proceed with the restructuring. The entirety of chapter 29 is going to come before you. And all these, all these issues will get straightened out at that point.
And then, you know, even in our efforts, you know, because right now, the complaint does, you know, include a climate change element. And then those are all the standards we just, not just LEED, that we would have to incorporate. And then developers would have to get credit for that, if they address, you know, the impacts of, you know, climate change also. I mean, because sustainability is a vast concept. It's not just, you know, putting some green roof, you know, some trees. It's much more than that.
It is, and that's why I'm very sensitive, and I hate to point it out, but that's why it's much different when somebody's saying that they're going to go through the whole process. Because anyone can propose LEED initiatives. But the council, the reason that they're there is to prove that, hey, this stuff will work. Conceptually, LEEDs and green, you know, design on paper is much different than what, how it actually, you know, how it turns out in the end. And by going through the whole process and going through the whole certification process, they're going to vet out the people who are proposing things that really shouldn't get credit for. So, okay.
Let the record reflect the attendance by our chair, Mr. Seifert, and also Ms. Boulay. Welcome.
Thank you. Thank you, counsel. Mr. Seifert and Ms. Boulay will sit out this vote on this, I think, because we started. Do you see a problem with that, counsel, or...
They're there, they can vote if they feel sufficiently informed, they're capable of making that decision.
Right.
I would prefer that in an abstention.
Well, I'll ask, Ms. Boulay, do you feel comfortable enough, or are you familiar with the items that we've been discussing? And do you feel comfortable enough to go ahead and make a vote on this? Do you have any questions of the petitioner while we're at it?
He actually asked. It was about the green.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, yes. I feel comfortable with this.
All right. I'll go ahead and let the record show that I'll continue on this item. And soon as we move on this item, I'll go ahead and turn the proceedings back over to our chairman. No, that's quite all right, sir. Thank you. Do we have any other questions on the board? Mr. Each, I see you're biting at the bit over there.
Yeah, just, just two of them. I looked at the space, 822 square feet. That's just the, that's just the footprint, right?
Right. These are going to be two-story...
What are you looking at?
Townhouses.
What are you looking at approximately in square footage for the, for the townhouse?
No, no, per, for each townhouse.
Can you, on the record, please?
1,200 square feet as a minimum per townhouse, per dwelling unit. In other words, these are going to be... In other words, these are going to be two-bedroom, two-bath homes, and 1,200 square feet.
That's pretty, that's pretty big.
Parking right in front.
Parking in front or not in the townhome?
Not in the townhouse.
In the garage, you're going to have it out on the street?
It's going to be out on the street.
How are you going to park it out on the street there? You got a?
Nope. It's going to be.
Can they come up and speak, or?
Okay, so it is, there is parking in the townhome itself. I apologize. It's not inside. It's right up to it. It's in front of it. In other words, it's not on the street.
It's like a driveway.
It's on our right, on our side of the sidewalk.
It's on the property, in a lot of ways.
Right, on the property, like every house in Keystone Point.
All right, you know, looking at the townhouse, looking at the beauty of that neighborhood, you want to improve, and I agree with you. Those two old buildings ought to go. I go down that street all the time. It's really a nice street. And I'm just wondering if, why not put the parking underneath and go high? You showed us a beautiful, may I finish? You showed us a beautiful diagram of your other projects. Why not go full boat with this project?
Well, first of all, that would increase the cost very considerably, which is one of the reasons, you know, I mean.
You're telling me it's a market, I'm not trying to be argumentative.
No, it's.
You're telling me this is a market. I read your proposal from top to bottom, and you're saying this is a market value townhouse.
Right.
You're going to build a high-end townhouse? It's market value. Build a high-end townhouse. Put the parking underneath. Make it something gorgeous. I mean, that's my, you're in a nice neighborhood. You want to improve it. You're telling us you're going. Frank, let me finish.
Yeah.
Okay. You're going to improve the neighborhood? Do something fantastic, you know? I want to see something nice over there, you know, beautiful. And I just think, if I go down 135th Street, I've seen some of those townhomes down there where they have the parking underneath, and some of them have it in front. But I think the higher-end ones would look good. I mean, you showed us a depiction of your other projects. And do they have parking underneath or in front?
Please speak on the record.
It's a totally different project. In Miami Beach, it's a condo unit. It's not like a townhouse. It's not like living in your own home and having access to your own home. It's a totally different, have an elevator. These have no elevator, and this is the beauty, I guess, from this project. We are trying to change from a normal condo, that you will see a lot of that, that you go, take an elevator, go to apartment, have a security or front desk. This is like a home. And the way to do that is you don't have it, his own parking, no behind, is next door, next to your door. And also, we believe that it's better from the economic point of view and for the neighborhood.
Yeah, we want to keep it affordable at the same time.
As a matter of. As a matter of convenience, just to walk from your car into your house without having to climb up the stairs, or climb up then a second set of stairs, and as a matter of marketability, and as a matter of cost to them, the economics of building their project, which that may increase the cost of the project, because now they're not building right on the ground anymore by 20 or 30 percent.
I don't mean to beat a dead horse, but what we've been seeing coming before this board is either government subsidies or low-end housing, okay? Government subsidies or just mundane, hey, this is North Miami. We're going to dump it there. Put together a beautiful proposal. It's a nice neighborhood. I want to see that neighborhood changed. I see those two dumpy buildings over there. Built, what, in the 20s or whatever? In fact, one of the reasons that we have that heightened restrictions over there was because of the houses on the other side of the street. And I'm just saying, if you're going to build something, build it nice. You show us a beautiful schematic. You come to North Miami, and are we going to get the deluxe model, or are we going to get the chopped liver model? That's what I'm saying. I don't mean to be.
This is the deluxe model, though.
I want to see something beautiful there. And, you know, we don't have a design review board, as you well know.
Well, staff is going to do the design review. They're the committee. We want to build a nice project, and we want to come back and build more nice projects. And this is a very nice project.
And I just want to agree.
And everything they've built has been nice, and they have that kind of pride in what they do, because they are architects. And if this is the first project they're building, and they have other property in North Miami, which they do, and they're trying to acquire more, they're going to be coming back again and again, and they want you to be happy, and they want to be happy.
Okay. Thank you. I got on my high horse, and I had to say what I had to say. Thank you very much. I mean, I think it's a good project. I'm just thinking.
And I appreciate your comment, you know, and we think about that, but, you know, just give us like the opportunity to show you that we are doing a good project.
No, no, believe me, I'm not knocking it. I just, you show me something, and, thank you.
Emmanuel, do you have a comment or question?
No, I pretty much take you back off.
Are there any other?
I believe you said you're fully compliant with the transition zones, right?
We're working on that. That's why we say this is a conceptual plan, because this property has some unique issues in terms of the transition zone. The north lot is outside the transition zone. The south lot is in the transition zone. We don't want to build like one different project on each lot. We want to file a unity of title, and we want a project that will, as one, be seamless. And certainly, we believe that this is consistent with the transition zone because of its low height and because its relative low density.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Wallen.
Thank you.
Are there any other comments from the audience, anyone wishing to speak on this? If anybody came in late and wants to speak on this, they will have to be administered the oath, since this is quasi-judicial. At this time, I don't see anyone. I'm going to go ahead and close the public hearing. Public hearing is now closed. Commission, is there any other comments on this project?
I don't think so.
I'll go ahead and.
It's a point of order. Before you take the vote, I would like to clarify the amendment that was proposed by Commissioner James, and I offer you the following suggestion. If you turn to the most important document here, which is the conditional use permit itself, on page two, section four, I would propose the following amendment, which I think would take care of Mr. James, Commissioner James's concern. And if we're all there, it's section four, which reads, "Green Building and Sustainability." I would strike.
Section four. Could you give us a page number? I'm sorry.
It's the second page. There's no page number, but it's on the second page. It would be the conditional use permit, exhibit one, which is really what you're approving here tonight.
I can't find it.
I don't know where you are.
Section four, "Green Building and Sustainability." Section four, second page.
I have no idea where.
All right. "Green Building and Sustainability."
I think that this, by striking the following, would take care of the confusion. And that would be striking, beginning with, "The development shall provide proof of the certified designation under the LEED slash NC rating system or any other comparable program, period. In the event that designation is not achieved," strike all of that out. Then it will read accordingly, "Prior to the submission of an application for a building permit, comma, the proposed development shall at a minimum incorporate the following green building principles, comma, as listed in section 5-803-J."
Everybody get that?
So, exactly. Now, number eight, which also is related to the gold certification, should also be taken out.
So, removing the LEED certification.
The certificate of occupancy should be conditioned on the applicant providing the same, the same amenities that were, we have just spoken about, which is under. So we will make reference, we will amend this, to take out the gold certification, because there's not going to be a gold certification. So it will mirror the requirements that we're actually approving under section four.
Everybody, everybody.
Yeah, I agree. I agree to that.
So that, so they mirror. They have to be, okay, thank you, sir.
All right. Very good. Okay, based on the amendment that council and staff has given us, I'll go ahead and entertain a motion to approve or disapprove the project.
So moved.
Mr. H moves for approval with the amendment.
With the amendment.
As stated. Do we have a second? Ms. Boulay has second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Resolution passes.
Good luck.
Very good.
Thank you very much. We'll be seeing you all soon.
Good luck with the project.
Staff, thank you very much.
Very good. At this time, I would take great pleasure in turning the gavel over to our chairman.
I noticed you bailed quickly on that, don't you, sir?
Well, I have a lot pending here with.
I see that.
Our CBOs tonight. Mr. Seifried?
So we take this in order. We're going to do PC 21-15. Resolution of the mayor and the city council of the city of North Miami, Florida, approving the award for fiscal year 2015-2016, community development block grant, CDBG funds to not-for-profit, community-based organizations, CBOs, and providing for an effective date and for all other purposes. Staff report, please.
Okay, we have our housing, you know, expert here, Ms. Mary Franz. With the report.
State your name and occupation for the record.
Marie Franz Jean Ference. I'm the housing manager with the city of North Miami. Staff hereby request that the planning commission hear the presentation of the community-based organization submitted proposal for fiscal year 1516 community block development, CDBG funding. Review staff recommendation and provide input in concurrence prior to forwarding to city council for final consideration. We've obtained like 12 applications. We have gathered a panel of four, comprised of public works, purchasing, city manager's office, parks and recreation. This year, I abstained myself from participating or making the decision just to bear the fact that I monitor them, I oversee the project, so therefore, I abstained myself from either choosing. The only thing that I, the only role that I played was just to provide the panel, the report, for them to make their decision. So, the Department of Planning Development has scheduled a presentation by the various CBOs. This is if, in case you do need that, for the CDBG funding. This presentation will take place regularly, of course, today at 7:00 PM. The applicants were invited to make their presentation. This is, of course, if you think it's necessary based on the report that was provided to you by the panel. And they'll be available for questions. I'm pretty sure that most of them are here tonight. A letter was sent to each of them informing the organization of the meeting did today, and the time, but they were not aware or made informed of what the proposals or the recommendation from the panels, the panel was. Percentage of regulation and consistent of fiscal year 1516, adopted by city council. The total amount of federal available grant for the public service was $112,000. However, usually, we have the youth program, which is the summer program. We have allocated $23,000, and the balance will go toward the CBOs. Twelve of them applied and responded. It was a total of $169,000 requested. Of course, you can see, well, they requested double of what we have allowed this year based on our funding from the CBOs for, yeah, from CBOs 1516. Like I said before, the evaluation committee was from purchasing department. I don't, unless per your request, you can see the abbreviations of their name, unless you want their name to be revealed. They are from the purchasing department, parks and recreation, city manager's office, and the public works department. They all were graded based on the package that was submitted at that time, how they best described their intent, and the project will have, will tend to benefit low and moderate income person. It was also based on adequate staffing, past experience, and if they are well organized to fit the priority of the city of North Miami. And also, the panel, a lot of decision was made just to see, just because, to see if that service will benefit the citizen or the resident of North Miami. With that, I pass the gavel to you to just make the decision, or to make recommendation, or if you do need them to do, make any presentation. The people that were here, the organization that are here today are, or they applied today, were SOTLA Haitian Neighborhood Center, Food for Life, SOTLA Haitian Neighborhood Center of the youth. They have a youth program, Holy Cross Lutheran School, Prosperity Social and Community Development Group, North Miami Foundation for Senior Citizen Services, the Irvin Thomas Elite Basketball Academy, Ladies of Valor Empowerment, Expert Resource and Community Center, Florida Immigration Coalition, Russell Life Skills and Reading Foundation, Police Athletic League of North Miami, better known as PAL.
All right, thank you. It is customary at this annual event that we do give each CBO present three minutes to speak and make their presentation. We do this in part because this event is televised, and the people of our community have a right to hear from these people. And so we'll take them in the, according to the list the staff has provided. And the first organization is Saint La Haitian Neighborhood Center Incorporated. Do we have a speaker from Saint La? Please come up. You have three minutes. Introduce yourself and give your address.
Good evening. My name is Shirley Planton, and I'm the Director of Youth and Family Advocacy for SOTLA Haitian Neighborhood Center. We have two applications, so I don't know if I'm going to do both standing up here.
You might as well while you're there. We'll give you six minutes in total.
Okay, so you want me to do both while I'm here?
I think it would be simpler, yes.
That makes sense to me, too.
If you can knock them out in three minutes, that'd be great.
Oh, I can make it happen. I can make it happen. So I'll start with what I do best, which are definitely the youth. That's what we have a passion for.
If you take less than six, we'll all be happy.
I assure you, it'll take less than six. Excuse me, I'm battling a cold. For those who are not familiar with SOTLA Haitian Neighborhood Center, we were birthed in 2000. We opened our doors in 2001, primarily as, from community leaders to address the chronic lack of access to services in the Haitian community. Throughout the years, our services have included access to safety net services, financial literacy, reemployment, workforce development, effective parenting, and of course, our youth enrichment, which is the newest baby of the program. SOTLA Youth Enrichment is an innovative program based on the full school service model. We are located on an actual school campus, which is Old Grove Elementary School on 156 and northeast 8th Avenue. And the primary purpose is to provide enrichment and supportive services to meet the needs of the youth, the family, and their caregivers. Now, I stand here and say that we all understand the plight that our youth are facing today. Many of our youth are dealing with Molly's, substance abuse, flakka, just to list some of the drugs that our kids are dealing with, not to mention the gangs and so forth. Of course, we're not saying that they're all in North Miami, but these are some of the issues that our youth are dealing with in the city. So, through this project, we propose to empower 30 young people, primarily residents of North Miami. All 30 will be of North Miami. Residents between the ages of 12 and 18, through educational, cultural, and service learning activities. Our mission is really to provide enrichment, and what we mean by that, our normal day-to-day services include educational support, service learning activities, educational explorations. We have mentors. You name it, we do it because we understand that it takes a holistic approach. What we are asking for the city to primarily fund through the youth enrichment program are the enrichment activities. Our young people, I believe, we believe in the notion. Our young people, I believe, we believe in the notion that if they don't know, if they don't know, they can't do it. So, the idea is to expose them to what they don't know. So, under educational enrichment, we would be doing a lot of the homework assistance, project assistance, which would really lead us to a lot of the exploration activities, which are the museums, Moca Museum, going out to dine at the Moca Restaurant, because the reality is, a lot of our kids have never sat at a restaurant. A lot of our kids, even though they attend North Miami Middle and North Miami Senior, have no idea what Moca Restaurant is. We've taken them to Moca, we've taken some of our passing clients to Moca Museum, and they're like, we didn't even know this was here. So, we want to be able to advise them and inform them and enrich their lives in ways that would allow them to move forward. Service learning, we make service learning the core of what we do, not because they simply need it for graduation, but we believe, we live in an ecosystem. So, if we understand the value of giving back, that allows these kids to be better humans when they get out of school, when they go into college. And of course, our cultural enrichment activities. Cultural enrichment would be Haitian Heritage Museum, the Moca Museum, Moca Plaza, when they're doing Taste of Haiti in May, right here in North Miami. So, it's really a lot of getting them to get in touch with who they are, because we believe if you know who you are, you can understand where you're going. What we're asking for the city to primarily fund is 12 activities, it's two activities a month, nine months, since this fiscal year is a little bit shorter, so it would be two activities times month, times nine months, that's 18 activities. We would be really asking for the admissions into a lot of these places. The museums are not free, and what happens is, a lot of our kids that we want to take can't afford to go to these events. So, if money's the barrier, then we're battling something that, as an organization, we can't do by ourselves. So, that funding, the assistance that we're asking from the city would allow us to rent the bus to take them, and to pay for admission into a lot of these museums and a lot of these events that are going on into the city. So, that would end my presentation on the youth enrichment. I'd be happy to answer any questions on the youth enrichment.
What was the total project cost?
The total project cost? Our total project, what we're asking, or the entire project?
That was going to be my next question, so you might as well answer both.
Okay, so our total project cost is about $81,970,000. $71,970 is program costs and in-kind contributions. So, what we're asking for the city is really $8,000 for admission tickets and $2,000 for transportation.
So, 81,700, and you're looking for 10?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Any additional questions for the youth enrichment? Thank you, can I do the next one? I'm trying to stay shorter than six.
Oh, I think you're at eight right now, but we'll...
Oh, I'm sorry. This one will be shorter, I don't have to do the history. SOTLA Workforce Development promotes employability, job retention, and long-term employment security through career planning, counseling, acquisition of skills. As the only social service provider of such services in our community, we aim to do four things. Long-term financial stability, career and educational counseling, referrals to English-language courses, and apprenticeship programs, placement of available opportunities. Fiscal year 2015, which ended in June for us, excuse me, the organization served 5,000 clients, 1,026 of which were North Miami residents. If funded, we expect to continue providing quality services to 100 North Miami residents quarterly, so that would mean 300 clients would receive our employment services, whether it be to become more employable, or actually be placed in employment positions for the year. That was shorter. Any questions?
Thank you very much, does any member of the board have a question? If not, thank you, you may sit down.
Thank you, yes, sorry.
Last one question, go ahead.
Can I come up?
Yes.
Nope. Can you hear me now?
Yeah, I can hear you.
Okay. Good evening, thanks for coming, by the way.
Thank you for having us.
And thank you for having programs in our community. I am one of, I think the only educator on this board, so I definitely value programs such as yours. I've benefited from it, and because of programs like that, I'm a college graduate, four times over, and, you know, definitely have a testimony to share, much like many of my peers who went through programs like this. Whether you get it or not, I encourage you to keep pushing and keep these programs alive in our communities, we definitely need them. My question for you is, how are your students referred to your program? Are they referred to the program? Do you all handpick them? And if so, how are they referred?
Our kids are primarily referred to us through the school system. We service, our priority are the North Miami, we service all of the North Miami feeder pattern, really focusing on North Miami Middle and North Miami Senior.
So, private schools and charters, is it open to them as well?
Open to them, we do partner with ASPIDA, we are working with PACE, we are working with some of the private schools like Holy Family, so yes.
Okay.
We also receive referrals from the JAC, which are, we are the only Haitian provider right now in North Miami doing the Civil Citation Program, which is the first-time misdemeanor offenses, so that we can help them get it off their record and move forward, so yes.
And they're referred based on them being truant, at-risk students?
Yes, primarily at-risk students, so the criteria is, you're truant, misbehavior in school, or parents sometimes call in, we have churches, we partner with a lot of the churches in the community, so we don't prefer any particular person, as long as you're asking for help, we're willing to give it.
And what about parent participation?
Parent participation is mandatory. Every parent of our child that comes through, if they fit between 9 and 14, receive a parenting course, which is a 12-hour course that teaches loving limits, it's really about disciplining and proper communication, and we keep that going with a monthly parent empowerment session. We don't call them parent, we don't want to teach you how to parent, because you've been a parent, but we do want to empower you to be a better parent to the kids of this generation, and that happens the last Monday of every month.
Okay, thank you.
You're very welcome.
And question.
Yes.
You said that some of the students are referred from the Juvenile Assessment Center, and with the Civil Citation Program, if it's there, well, certain, it depends on a misdemeanor?
If it is a first-degree misdemeanor of any kind, of course, it has to be a misdemeanor, so we're talking about the most common ones, the battery, the trespassing, those are the ones that are usually qualified. We don't pick it, because the JAC would make sure that the student is qualified, based on the crime, to even be a part of the Civil Citation Program.
And the JAC makes sure that they're a resident of the city?
Absolutely, because they do it based on zip codes, so we tell them the zip codes that we want to provide services to.
And do you follow the, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
Do you follow your students after they've aged out of your program?
I have students that, I have a couple here that I've had since the 7th grade that are seniors this year, who we're preparing to go to college, and we have some that are college students who come back and mentor our younger students, and we're, who are mentoring our elementary school kids.
I think that deserves a round of applause. Thank you.
That is really good.
I'm done.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you so much for having us, have a good evening.
Before, excuse me, one last question, what was the total program cost on that?
On, that was the youth one, on the employment one, it's $91,000, and we're asking for, I believe, $8,000. I don't have the exact paperwork in front of me, because the executive director isn't here. She was going to do this presentation.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. Next up will be the Food for Life Network. Who do we have for Food for Life? Going once, going twice, nobody Food for Life, okay, we'll skip that and go on to the next. Holy Cross Lutheran School, anybody here from Holy Cross? All right, state your name and location, please.
Yes, good evening, my name is Soraya Trujillo, I'm the Assistant Principal at Holy Cross Lutheran School, and our address is 650 Northeast 135th Street. I'm here to present our Dare to Be You Family Enrichment Program. I wrote a little brief thing, because I can talk a lot, and I know you only gave me three minutes, so I'm going to let you know what we're about. Holy Cross has been serving the North Miami community for over 64 years. This program that we're requesting funding for is our Dare to Be You Family Enrichment Program, which is a program developed by Colorado State University. It is a program where you work with parents and their children, and teach them areas such as cognitive development, self-concept and self-esteem, self-responsibility, communication, social skills, and making sound decisions, and reasoning skills. It is a 12-week program, I've been facilitating the program for four years at Holy Cross. Unfortunately, this year, we didn't get the funding for it that we had in the past from the Children's Trust, so we're seeking other sources to fund the program. We're asking for, to present one cohort of 12 weeks. The way the program works is, the families come together, we have dinner, that we provide dinner, which is one of the major costs of the program. We all eat together, and then the children go with their facilitators based on age groups. The parents stay with me, and we go through all the aspects of the program. One of the major issues is discipline, we have a lot of single-parent homes, the moms are tired, they have a lot of stress, the homework, and so, the discipline tends to be more corporal punishment, rather than teaching the children the right way to behave, and discussing how you could have handled that in a different way, and getting, taking responsibility for your actions. So, this is an intervention program that really makes a difference, and I've had so many parents come back to me and tell me, now, my child was getting in trouble every day last year, and now, I have no complaints from the teachers, and it's just because the parents have changed the way they are parenting and disciplining the children. As you know, early intervention programs help reduce crime in the community. This program is open to all children ages 2 to 17 in North Miami that qualify for free and reduced lunch. Let's see what else I can tell you real fast. Do, 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 do.
25 seconds.
Okay, the class becomes a pseudo-support group, as parents are able to share their issues with each other, they share their telephone numbers, and then they can help each other out. It's an evidence-based program that has proven results in our community, and is provided by a school with a proven track record of 64 years in North Miami. I respectfully ask that you fund this program for our community. I'm only asking for $7,500, that's all.
Thank you very much. Anybody have any questions? Go ahead.
So, the students come from just your school community?
No, no. No, the, we put flyers in all the schools in the North Miami community. We ask if a parent from our school knows someone in the North Miami community that could benefit from the program. It's open to anybody that meets the qualifications in this grant, which would be free and reduced lunch.
And how did, how was the validity of the program tested?
It is a evidence-based program by Colorado State University. We went to training for it four years ago, the facilitators did.
Okay, so, the evidence is based on what student performance, like how do you track that evidence that's presented?
There is a questionnaire test that the parents take at the beginning of the class, the first session, and then they take a follow-up at the end of the 12 weeks. Colorado State University has a company that they track the results of those, we submit the results to them, and they track that.
Are the parents referred, then, to outside resources if they're still...
We do have communications with social workers and anything that they need, any services that they need, depending on the situation of the family. Yes, we do do that.
I have a question.
Go ahead, yes.
I'm looking at your budget proposal, I don't know how many of you had a chance to print out, I had staff print this out for me, so forgive me for having paperwork, but the disk that they gave us, unfortunately, some of it did not download, I think most of us had a problem with trying to access it. So, my question is, on your budget proposal, you have a lead facilitator, assistant lead facilitator, and two children facilitators, and listed wages for each one of those persons. You were asking for $7,500, if I may, Mr. Chairman, I note that the staff is recommending $6,000. How would that affect your manpower or the program overall?
I will make it work, I can make it work. I'll have my cafeteria manager cook more than ordering out.
I noticed that that's in-kind services, and so is maintenance, but your staff, are they, are they teachers at the school?
Yes, they are.
Or are they facilitators?
Yes, they were trained, they're teachers at the school, and they were trained when we originally received the grant four years ago.
It's a good school.
By the staff from Colorado State University.
All right, and how long have they been participating in the program?
The teachers?
Has it been the same group of individuals?
Same group, for four years.
Okay, all right, very good, thank you.
Thank you so much.
No more questions.
All right, anyone else have a question? If not, thank you very much.
Thank you very much for your time.
All right, next item up, Prosperity Social and Community Development Group Incorporated. State your name and your relationship to the company, and you'll have three minutes.
Okay. Good evening, my name is Nadashville Saint, and I am the founder of Prosperity Social Community Development Group. Our address is 1125 Northeast 125th Street, North Miami, Florida, 33161, Suite 10. Where do I begin? Prosperity has been in existence for four and a half years, and we have been serving the city of North Miami since we opened our doors in the city of North Miami. Prosperity has been serving over 130 residents in the city of North Miami, and our program, Connecting the Bridge Through Literacy. Connecting the Bridge Through Literacy was birthed based on the lack of parent involvement at school, and after doing our research with several principals in the city of North Miami, they informed us that the lack was because a lot of the parents had no literacy and had no involvement in school, and probably never attended school back home. So, we incorporated the program, and the city of North Miami with the help of the library. Our participants are able to obtain library cards, and also get more involvement in their children's school involvement with teachers, homework, and et cetera. I want to be short, and I'm nervous, to talk about our success, we serviced up adults from 45 and older, when I say older, as like 90 years old, that have never attended school before, even know how to write their name. And with our success, we have about four adults from the age of 60 to 75 that have passed and got their GDs, and currently attending PTAs, thank you, attending PTA programs at school, and even sitting on the board now as PTA. Not only have their self-esteem has increased, they are very actively involved, and they are now with the new renovated library, the library has books that are also in Creole, they are also checking out books, and with the help with the library, we have family reading nights, where they're able to read to their children at night on Wednesdays with the library. And this program is doing tremendous great work in the city of North Miami. We plan to increase to 160 participants, and we plan to continue our service and expand our days, not just Mondays and Wednesdays and Saturdays, but Monday through Friday, with the help of this fund. Thank you, any questions?
Thank you very much. Any member of the commission have a question here? Hearing none, thank you very much.
What, the educator's back on the...
You better jump in there, you know.
Yeah, gotta get them, sorry.
Yeah.
So, as far as the adults go, they're mainly Haitian, Creole, Spineless adults?
Yes, not just, but it's not only for that, but it has been mainly Haitian-Americans.
And how do you find them, or how do they, how are they referred to your program?
The school, the school refers us, because some of the kids, the teachers cannot communicate with the parents, and churches, we advertise a lot in the church and the community, there's a lot of churches in the city of North Miami, and also the library. So, we always out at the library and recruiting.
May I also suggest the adult ed programs as well, because it is the reverse there too, so many of them may not know that your program exists.
Yeah, that too, but the principals seem to make it seem like it's a competition with us too, but the difference between our program with the adult ed is that it's a smaller setting, and the tutors that are there are ESAR endorsed, and we provide them an assessment based on the entrance of coming into the program, depending on their level, they are set at certain levels. So, we have volunteers from Barre University, FIU, FAU, that comes out to get ours, that also provides private tutors to them. So, that's why our success has been so good. Thank you.
All right, any other questions? No, all right, thank you very much. All right, let's hear from the North Miami Foundation for Senior Citizens.
Hi, I'm Debbie Kleinberg, I'm the Executive Director of the North Miami Foundation for Senior Citizen Services.
I thought you looked familiar. Yes.
Been here a couple of times.
Yes, indeed you have.
We're at, for those of you who don't know, we're at 620 Northeast 127th Street in North Miami. Who are we? We've been here since 1970. North Miami. Who are we? We've been here since nineteen seventy-four. We started by a group of activists, community activists like yourselves in North Miami, who saw needs among the elderly and wanted to find simple solutions to help them remain independent in their own homes. We come to you today to seek funding for our Helping Frail Seniors Program. I should step back and say, tell you about some of the other services that we offer. We provide home-delivered meals, transportation to the grocery store, social work support services such as counseling, screening, and assessment. And vital to us since the beginning has been a volunteer service program. As people become more homebound, they become more socially isolated. So it's incredibly important for us to recruit and train volunteers for friendly visits, telephone reassurance calling, and chore services. This program that we're seeking funding for is to help support our home-delivered meals program. It's focusing on providing two meals a day, seven days a week, to some of our frailest client population. It would provide breakfast and lunch. The goal for this program is to reduce hunger and food insecurity and promote the healthy well-being and independence of those served. I will take any questions that you have, and I thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, Debbie. Does any member of the commission have a question here? No? We're fine? All right. Very good. Thank you very much, Debbie.
Thank you.
All right. And let's hear from the Irving Thomas Elite Basketball Community.
Good evening. My name is Natasha Thomas, and I am the Chief Operating Officer for the Irving Thomas Elite Basketball Academy. My husband couldn't be here tonight. We both operate the organization. He's actually traveling. His name is Irving Thomas, and he's been working with the Los Angeles Lakers for the past fifteen years. We started our organization back in 2010, and we initially started in the city of Miami Gardens. Three years ago, we were approached by the Police Athletic League to come and do our, implement our program for their Police Athletic League. So we partnered with them about two years ago, and we've been working with them for the past three years to implement this project. We have had a substantial amount of success with the kids, and also a huge response from the parents. And they have expressed that we need this type of program in their, in the community. We've had the program, we operate the program in the summertime. It normally happens a week after school, and it's the PAL Summer Jam. We've been, we've made it an annual event. And I'm trying to, I'm normally not the spokesperson, but I'm a little nervous, but our organi, I'm sorry.
How many people do you have in your program?
Okay, for the past three years, we've had at least about one hundred kids that have participated in the program. But over the five years, we've been able to reach fifteen hundred children within the, within the five years. So we are looking to expand the program throughout the year in North Miami, and go into the schools, and reach more students. So the program that we have proposed is, we wanna be able to reach a hundred and fifty kids per school, which averages out to be five clinics in the city of North Miami, which it would reach eight hundred and fifty students. So we wanna be able to offer a basketball skills and educational skills camp that also, that teaches kids both how to be athletic and to be able to offer the educational component that would help children to transition out of sports into, into college. Whenever they end their athletic career, whether it's in high school, college, or professionally, they'll have the tools on how to transition out of sports. So we're looking to ask the city of North Miami to help us fund the project so that we could extend it past one week and possibly either do the second week, I mean, do two weeks in June, or to also extend the program throughout the city of North Miami, so that we can implement the Pacer test, which gauges, you know, their athletic abilities from the beginning of the program until the end. And we also wanna be able to offer educational components, reading assessments, so that we could train them, assess them in the beginning, and also assess them in the end.
All right, thank you very much.